Our legislative caucus prior to the start of our legislative session. So I will call the meeting to order immediately following this legislative caucus. Mr. Truesdale will call the roll. The invocation this evening will be led by Vice President Green, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead. For communications this evening, we are joined by Mayor Williams. She will present the 2026 budget proposal. We will then move to courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of the minutes for the legislative session that occurred on November 10th, 2025. The following reports of committees will be delivered. I will deliver the report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of November 18th, 2025. Next, Vice President Green, our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, will share a report on the work session of November 18th, 2025. The next report will be delivered by our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, Councilwoman Daniels, on the work session of November 18th, 2025. Next, our Public Safety Chair will share a report, Councilman Jones, on the work session of November 18th, 2025. And the final committee report will be delivered by Councilman Rodriguez, our Public Works Committee Chair, on the work session of November 18th, 2025. We have three ordinances for first reading: Bill 12 of 2025, Bill 13 of 2025, and Bill 14 of 2025, all of which will be moved to the Budget and Finance Committee. We have one ordinance for amendment, that's Bill 11 of 2025. One ordinance for final passage, Bill 11 of 2025. We will then move to resolutions. Resolution 75 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 76 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 77 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 80 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Oh, I'm sorry, that was previously discussed. We will vote upon Resolution 80 of 2025. Resolution 81 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 84 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 85 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 86 of 2025, excuse me, will move to the Administration Committee. House Resolution 87 of 2025 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution 88 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution 89 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 90 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. And Resolution 91 of 2025 will also move to the Public Works Committee. Is there any old business for discussion? Okay, any new business?
Excuse me, yes, Madam President. I just wanted to update everyone on the holiday event that we just attended with council for the parade, and also how the meal distribution went.
Okay, any other new business?
I would just highlight the budget hearings that will be coming up.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Okay, then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:04 PM. I would like to call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Davis?
Present.
Sorry, sorry, I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rolls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Present. I'd like to note there is currently no volume on Channel 20, so I'd like to pause the meeting until that volume is corrected. Hello, testing.
One, two, one, two. Check one, one, check, check. One, two.
Testing, hello? Oh, it's very delayed. Okay, thanks. Exactly, he can't hear, right? Not making this up. Okay, well, I'd like to resume the meeting although nobody can hear. The invocation will be led by Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. Oh, excuse me, President Hill. If we could all just take a moment to acknowledge the tragedy that took place earlier in our city and send our thoughts and prayers to all those who were impacted. Thank you. Also, as we head into our holiday season, if we could just remember to keep our neighbors in our hearts and in our minds, and just remember the reason for the season as we look to spend time with our friends and family. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could please rise. Thank you. For communications this evening, we are joined by Mayor Wanda R.D. Williams. She will share a presentation of the 2026 budget proposal. Mayor Williams?
Thank you, President Hill. President Hill, members of council and constituents of the City of Harrisburg, thank you for this opportunity to present the introduction to the 2026 general fund budget. Each year, this moment tests us the strength of our priorities, our discipline, and our commitment to the people who trust us with their city. This proposal reflects months of serious work by our finance staff, our budget office, our department directors, and the hundreds of employees who keep this government moving every day. Tonight begins your formal review. Over the next several weeks, our staff will answer questions, provide documents, and walk through every departmental need. I respect this process and I expect us to approach it with clarity and honesty. The people of Harrisburg deserve nothing less from any of us. Let me begin with the foundation of this proposal. This is a balanced budget with no tax increase. That achievement required discipline in a year marked by sharply rising insurance costs of a volatile fuel market and inflation that continues to strain nearly every municipal service. Even with these pressures, we protect our residents from a tax burden that they should not be asked to carry. We accomplished this through strong fiscal management and a willingness to bring more work in-house. This year alone, we paved 101 streets, the highest total in more than a decade. Our expanded in-house paving program continues to save money and deliver better results. The same is true for demolitions. Out of approximately 30 demolition projects, half were completed by our own public works employees, allowing us to eliminate dangerous structures faster and reinvest savings into neighbor revitalization. We also made real progress in stabilizing our solid waste operations. The city recovered over $1.4 million in delinquent trash bills, and we secured close to $2 million in trash fee forgiveness for qualifying residents.
Excuse me, Mayor Williams, can you move the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
In trash fee forgiveness for qualifying residents, and we are not done yet. These actions provided meaningful relief to households that needed it. At the same time, we renewed regional trash contracts with Penbrook, Paxton, and Stilton boroughs, demonstrating that our services remain reliable, competitive, and trusted beyond our borders. These partnerships strengthen our bottom line and reinforce Harrisburg's position as a capable regional service provider. We are also confronting the real cost of trash service in today's market. Recycling alone now costs $95 per ton. Fuel, labor, equipment, and insurance continue to rise. The proposed trash rate adjustment reflects that reality. It is not a choice I make lightly, but it is the responsible decision necessary to maintain critical services without raising fees. Public safety remains a cornerstone of this budget and of my administration. This year, we swore in seven new firefighters and celebrated three promotions to captain. We hired three new police officers with several well-earned promotions across the ranks. I will always be transparent with our residents. We are still short in our police bureau, but I have an enormous respect for the men and women who continue to do the job with professionalism, restraint, and dedication. Our fire bureau remains one of the strongest in the State of Pennsylvania, entering the year with a contract that honors the work they perform every day and a record of protecting lives with outstanding success. Housing continues to be one of my highest priorities, and this budget shows exactly that. We had four major housing developments completed this year alone: J&amp;B Gardens, Bethel Village, Sycamore Homes, TLC Cornerstone. The brand-new 48-unit Woodward Loss, where we broke ground just last week, has begun construction. This year, the city committed $7.75 million to affordable housing and over $700,000 for senior home repairs, roof replacements, and accessibility upgrades for 44 homes through our Building and Housing Realization Program. Through ARPA Home, we utilized a shy of $1 million and completed 38 homes, and we directed approximately $300,000 towards inspections, testing, advertising, and training for our LED program. We hired two new program managers to accelerate ARPA investments and ensure seniors, families, and longtime residents can remain safely and comfortably in their homes. Now, across our neighborhoods, our parks and recreation programs continue to create joy, connection, and community pride. This year included our Easter egg hunt, the summer music series, Fishing Day at Italian Lake, roller skating at the Capitol Pavilion, the return of the City Island Arcade, and expanded Juneteenth Week collaboration, National Night Out, the Halloween Bash at the Brownstone, the tree lighting, and our upcoming Winter Wonderland at Camp Curtain. These programs strengthened the very fabric of our city. Our six major signature events: Ice and Fire, Archfest, the Fourth of July Celebration, Capona, the Holiday Parade, and the New Year's Eve Celebration continue to bring tens of thousands of people into Harrisburg to support our small businesses and showcase the vibrancy of our community. I am also proud to say that we have very few managerial vacancies and more new hires than what we have had and are seeing in decades, with strong retention across nearly every department. Investing in our workforce is investing in the stability and future of this city. Tonight, I want to be clear. Our progress did not come from avoiding hard choices or pretending that the work is easy. It came from staying focused on the responsibilities we hold to the people who elected us. It came from leadership rooted in honesty, not theatrics. Harrisburg has momentum because we did the work, even when the work was difficult and even when the challenges were loud. I remain ready to collaborate where collaboration is genuine and productive. I remain equally ready to stand firm where leadership and clarity are required. The residents of Harrisburg expect resolve, not hesitation, and truth, not performance. In the weeks ahead, my administration will continue to bring forward clear information supporting documentation and the depth of knowledge that this process requires. My directors and staff deserve to be treated with respect as they present their work. They are professionals who show up prepared, and they will continue to do so. What they will not do is participate in exchanges that undermine their expertise or diminish the integrity of this process. Harrisburg residents expect a budget review grounded in facts, civility, and honest inquiry, and that is exactly what my team will bring to the table. President Hill, members of council, I look forward to serious and productive discussions in the coming weeks. My responsibility is, and always will be, to the people of this city. This budget honors that responsibility, and I am proud to present it to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams.
You're quite welcome.
We will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. Mr. Truesdale has added a timer to the screen for your reference. You will have four minutes to share your comments. I'd like to begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? As long as you're speaking into a microphone, that's fine.
Good evening, council. My name is Libby Prophet. I resigned at 2025 Chestnut Street. I wanted to share something with you because often I come and I'll say, "I was an advocate for medical marijuana, and I never showed you anything." So I figure I can use a couple of minutes and show you documentation. I also wanted to talk about something I may have sent to you guys about civil governance, a comic thing that I'm promoting. Now, with the cannabis thing, I formed Cannabis Education Decriminalization Incorporated in 2011. I did it legally, and I put some things together: rallies and meetings. I have clips from even newspaper, Patriot News. I don't think they exist anymore, but I have verification of my work. I held meetings at several places: Midtown Bookstore, Kosher Park across the river, Allison Hill. I also went to places such as First Friday in Lancaster. Hundreds of signatures. I still have some. It's about 700 here, but I gave thousands to the lawmakers who wrote the bill. So I walked the streets, I took signatures, I held meetings. I still have agendas, meeting minutes, rally stuff. But one of the things that I really liked that I kept, and I wanted to show you guys, was the person that wrote the bill, his name was Daleon Leish. And he was one of the persons I go, I collect information, and I actually sold the product as a commodity. And I still have his letter thanking me. I also still have the envelope, as well as other people that co-wrote the bill. They thanked me and they sent me such, and I still have it. My work, I still have flyers that I gave out, even the research that I did. I still have those. And I wanted to tell you that because I often say, "Well, you know, I did the work to keep our melanated people from being thrown in for some of the bad conduct that we can probably stare without jail." But I never showed you, and I have verification. I'm willing to show you guys. I'm actually thinking of putting a pamphlet together for advocacy purposes to show individuals that we could change laws, but we have to be willing. It wasn't easy, but I did the work. Also said that I wrote the strategic plan that got our first African-American president in office. If you get a chance to go to Libby that Belgrave, that US, that Army, that NIL, you can probably get that document, but that's a military document, and I cannot share it. The other thing that I wanted to show you guys and talk about was an initiative, a creative governance initiative that I may have sent a couple of emails out, $500 if someone would do some comic as to what's going on. And there is a few benefits, and the benefit is encouraging creative storytelling, fostering ethical leadership. So I am serious about it, and only 500 because I'm expecting more than. So I am serious about it, and only five hundred because I'm expecting more than one winners. So if I give out three winners, that's willing to look at your Youtubes and create a comic of it, that's fifteen hundred, and I don't have to, you know what I mean? So that's what I'm going to do here with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with the meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. On Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Administration Committee met to discuss one bill, Bill eleven of two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance for giving and discharging certain city real estate taxes, including interest, penalties, and costs, and striking off tax liens for certain historically tax-exempt properties. Council regarding the reinstated exemptions for several properties. It is important to note that two other taxing authorities have already taken action, Dauphin County and the Harrisburg School District. Council members asked the following question. What are the addresses? At the time of the discussion, page two of the bill and an exhibit were missing from the document on E-codes. Ms. Cameron responded and shared the addresses and entities involved. Twelve oh one North Thirteenth Street, the parcel number is zero seven dash zero seven six dash zero two eight. There are two parcels located at eighteen twenty-four North Fourth Street. The first parcel number is eleven dash zero one five dash zero two three. The second parcel number is eleven dash zero one five dash zero nine nine. And the last address is eleven fourteen A North Second Street. The parcel number there is zero five dash zero one zero dash zero three two. For the meeting record, the full scan of Bill eleven of two thousand and twenty-five was shared with council members by the Law Bureau on Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at eleven oh six AM. So there should have been ample time to review the remaining pages and exhibits. I encourage my colleagues to support Bill eleven of two thousand and twenty-five, as we have supported these measures previously. This concludes the report of the Administration Committee. The next report you will hear will be delivered by Vice President Green, our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, on the work session of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Vice President Green?
Thank you, President Hill. During the work session of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Budget and Finance Committee met to discuss Resolution eighty-four of two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the seventh proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget reallocation, appropriation, and allocation of certain funds. We had a presentation from the Budget and Finance Department detailing the reallocation request. Exhibit A encompasses a reallocation to accommodate a twenty-seventh pay cycle that will occur this year. It was mentioned that this is unusual, but due to how the holidays fall, there will be a twenty-seventh pay period that was not allocated in the original budget. Exhibit B details the increased need in the legal budget to, budget to encompass encumbrances and contracts that remain open, and it also is to move money and be proactive and planning for the medical costs that are expected to be paid throughout the remainder of this year due to unexpected medical costs for employees. I ask my colleagues to support this resolution, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. The next report you will hear will be delivered by our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, Councilwoman Daniels, on the work session of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. On November eighteenth, the Community and Economic Development met to discuss two legislative items. Both of them were land development projects. The first one is seventy-five hyphen twenty twenty-five. This is a project located at sixteen oh five through sixteen thirteen Market Street. This project had been introduced earlier in a slightly different form where there would be multiple units in one building. It was finally presented as dividing and reorganizing the properties into four separate parcels, and each parcel will have four row homes. And the project has also shifted from tenants to homeownership, so the goal is to to have these properties end up into the hands of low and moderate income homeowners. The second resolution was seventy-six hyphen twenty twenty-five. That's the property located at nineteen oh nine North Front Street. The applicant was WCI Partners, and that is convert, converting what is currently office space into sixty residential units. And this project is completely market rate project. Both applicants have met their burden, and I'd recommend that we approve both pieces of legislation. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. The next report you will hear will be delivered by our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones, on the work session of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, President Hill. On November the eighteenth, the Public Safety Committee held a work session where we discussed Resolution eighty-five of two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution eighty-five of two thousand and twenty-five is a resolution confirming the appointment of Celeste M. Diller to serve on the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, also known as CLIA. Present to discuss, it was tongue twister. Present to discuss resolutions eighty-five of two thousand and twenty-five was Ms. Celeste Diller. There weren't many questions asked by council, just mainly comments appreciating her willingness to serve. Ms. Diller mainly expressed her passion to see our youth do better in our community and to help them understand policing and not fear police, and to help both the police and the community understand each other better. Council members mostly shared comments on Ms. Diller's being bilingual and if she has any potential conflicts of interest, which she has none. And this concludes the work of the Public Safety Committee, and again, I ask my colleagues to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. The final committee report you will hear this evening will be delivered by our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez, on the work session of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. On November eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, the Public Works Committee met to discuss a pair of resolutions. In attendance for both sessions were Grants Manager Ms. Rebecca Vollmer, Public Works Director Mr. David West, and Interim Business Manager Sam Sokowski. The first resolution we discussed was Resolution eighty of two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution eighty of two thousand and twenty-five was a resolution authorizing the submission of a Pennsylvania local share assessment grant application for up to one million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to fund renovations of the city public works facility at eighteen twenty Paxton Street, Harrisburg, PA. This resolution addressed pertinent information dedicated to the restoration of the public works buildings, such as the VMC flooring, a specialty flooring that can withstand the oil, truck, and other compounds. The floor is currently damaged and could pose a hazard to our employees. The grant will ensure safer working condition for our public works team, and it's roughly in the range of about three hundred thousand dollars itself. The Brenner deal is now closed, closed about two months ago, and we are solely responsible for any and all repairs Director West mentioned. Plus, this will also be going to old windows, bullet holes in the windows from when we first got the building, roof replacement, and those are the priorities in that order. I also forwarded the flooring estimates from HAOC and some other images from the public works, including the rooftop, the ground, over to council for their viewing pleasure. Director West also stated the entire fleet is in there, and the department can desperately benefit from the upgrades. No questions from council regarding Resolution eighty of two thousand and twenty-five, and the committee chair motioned to have this added to today's agenda. Also, we discussed Resolution eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-five is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Borough of Penbrook, authorizing the city to continue and provide municipal solid waste and recycling collection and disposal services within the borough. This will be a renewal of the previous agreement. The contract will be a three-year agreement with two-year extensions totaling five years. Also, if council would like to know the agreement financial actuals, please reach out to Director West, and he wouldn't mind getting that information over. And Mr. Sokowski did email over the revenues and expenses for the twenty-four, twenty-five years, both for Paxton and the Penbrook renewals. No questions from council regarding Resolution eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-five, and the committee chair also motioned to have this added to today's agenda. I highly encourage my colleagues to support both resolutions today, and that concludes the report from the work session on eleven eighteen of twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. We have three ordinances for first reading. We will begin with Bill twelve of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill twelve, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance establishing the budget for the municipal government of the city of Harrisburg for the year two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. Bill twelve of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next, we have Bill thirteen of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill thirteen, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance amending the codified ordinance of the city of Harrisburg, Title V, Licensing and Taxation, Part Five, Real Estate Taxes, Chapter Five dash five oh one, Property Tax by establishing for the year two thousand and twenty-six a tax levy on land and improvements in providing for the distribution of taxes levied and assessed and providing for a tax rebate for the difference between the tax due and attributable to the year two thousand and twenty-six tax levy over the tax due and attributable to the tax year two thousand and twenty-six tax levy for qualifying senior citizens. It's my least favorite one.
Okay. Is that correct? It says two thousand and six.
Yes, unfortunately, that is correct. That's when this started, and perhaps should be revisited someday.
Perhaps. Just wanted to make sure. I know that was a lengthy read. Bill thirteen of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Our final ordinances for ordinance, ordinance, excuse me, for first reading is Bill fourteen of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill fourteen, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance amending Chapter Five dash five oh three, Tax Abatement and Exemptions of Title Five, Licensing and Taxation Code, to further extend the statutory termination date by one year to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. Bill fourteen of two thousand and twenty-five will also move to the Budget and Finance Committee. We have one ordinance for amendment, Bill eleven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill eleven, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance for giving and discharging certain real estate taxes, including interest, penalties, and cost, and striking off tax liens for certain historically tax-exempt properties.
Thank you. We have one ordinance for final passage, Bill eleven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it one final time?
Bill eleven, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance for giving and discharging certain real estate taxes, including interest, penalties, and cost, and striking off tax liens for certain historically tax-exempt properties.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill eleven of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Bill eleven, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. We will now move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution seventy-five of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution seventy-five, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for sixteen oh five to sixteen thirteen Market Street, submitted by Chris Franklin of Helping Hands of Handels Helping Hand Foundation to consolidate and re-subdivide the various lots comprising the project site into four separate parcels on which attached row homes will be constructed and associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution seventy-five of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-five, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution seventy-six of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for nineteen oh nine North Front Street, submitted by David Butcher of WCI Partners LP to convert the existing office building into a multifamily dwelling and associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution seventy-six of two thousand and twenty-five? I have one comment. While I appreciate the broad portfolio of WCI Partners and their offerings of affordable housing in some of their other properties, with this particular property of sixty units, approximately twelve, could have been deemed affordable for our residents, but the applicant was not interested in such for this property, so as a result, I will be voting no on the resolution. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
No.
Resolution seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of five to two.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution seventy-seven, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with SGS Architects Engineers Incorporated to provide architectural services for renovation of the bedroom and restroom facilities at Fire Station Two, located at one forty North Sixteenth Street.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-seven, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution eighty of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the submission of a Pennsylvania local share assessment grant application for up to one million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to fund renovations of the city's public works facility at eighteen twenty Paxton Street, Harrisburg, PA, one seven one zero four.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution eighty of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution eighty, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Bureau of Penbrook, authorizing the city to continue to provide municipal solid waste and recycling collection and disposal services within the Bureau.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution eighty-one, twenty twenty-five passes by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution eighty-four of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-four, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving the seventh proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget reallocation appropriation and allocation of certain funds.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments or concerns related to Resolution eighty-four of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-four, twenty twenty-five passes by vote of six to one.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution eighty-five of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-five, twenty twenty-five, a resolution confirming the appointment of Celeste M. Dillard to serve on the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments or concerns related to Resolution eighty-five of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-five, twenty twenty-five passes by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-six, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Steve Zimmerman to provide access and service of the city's historical mainframe, programming operations and related services in the Bureau of Information Technology.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution eighty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-seven, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a collection agreement with the Harrisburg School District for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and the amusement tax for the twenty twenty-six tax year.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next, Resolution eighty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-eight, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of General Services for the purpose of authorizing the city to provide municipal solid waste, refuse, industrial, lunchroom, office waste and recycling collection and disposal services for designated DGS facilities within the city.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Public Works Committee. Next, Resolution eighty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-nine, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving the extension of the Broad Street Market Lease and Management Agreement between the city of Harrisburg and the Broad Street Market Alliance.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution ninety of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution ninety, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Harrisburg School District to provide salt to the school district at a price of one hundred twenty-five dollars per ton during the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six winter season.
Thank you. Resolution ninety of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Public Works Committee. Our final resolution this evening is Resolution ninety-one of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution ninety-one, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the renewal of a services agreement with Penn Waste Incorporated to continue to serve as the city's single stream recycling disposal service.
Thank you. Resolution ninety-one of two thousand and twenty-five will also move to the Public Works Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, new business, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to um, send some love out to the city and remind everyone the reason for the season. Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Um, the Public Works Committee distributed over three hundred hot meals to begin of this month and just wanted to thank our uh, partners at Crawdaddy's and Uncle Dre's Cafe, as well as the Public Works Building. Um, have the whole team just did an honorary job and I just wanted to send hats off and kudos to everyone that participated. Also, uh, my family and I participated in the holiday parade over the weekend with uh, fellow council members and we just had a festive good time. It was just amazing to see everyone and see those KOs run after the candy as usual. Uh, me and Jared made a bet to see how much we're gonna have to buy next year 'cause we always seem to run out when we make that bet and turn, so we're gonna figure it out one day. We'll get the science down. But I just wanted to thank all my colleagues on council for a great year thus far and I wish them all the best on um, for Thanksgiving and they have a festive good time and bellies full, as well as everyone in attendance. So once again, have a happy Thanksgiving and it's great to see you all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you, President Hill, and good evening, everyone. I wanted to first off with wishing everyone um, a happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays. Um, however you celebrate or what you are celebrating this upcoming week, I'm wishing everyone the best. I also wanted to remind everyone that on Monday, December first, we will have our second uh, town hall meeting that, in which we collaborate with the Harrisburg School Board. The topic will be the GVI program. Uh, it will be at twenty twenty State Street at the Omega Sci-Fi House. Uh, it will start at five thirty and we hope to see as many residents there um, with questions and also to gather information. So, hope to see you there next Monday at five thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. I didn't forget about you, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Hill. Um, as we head into our holiday season, we also get to hit in the budget season, uh, which we all know is our favorite time of the year as we discuss the budget and the priorities for the city of Harrisburg, uh, as proposed by the mayor. Uh, we get to review over everything, have an open and honest conversation with our residents and um, just get down into the nitty gritty of the finances of the city of Harrisburg. Uh, so for our budget meetings this year, our first meeting will be held on Tuesday, December second, here in council chambers at five thirty PM. Second meeting will be Wednesday, December third, here in council chambers at five thirty PM. The third meeting will be December fourth, Thursday, December fourth, uh, here in council chambers at five thirty PM. And our fourth meeting will be Monday, December eighth, here in council chambers. This will be at six thirty PM because there is a, a hearing before that here in council chambers hosted by uh, the housing, Building and Housing. I will be hosting a, a hearing here uh, prior to that. Um, potentially, we'll be voting on the budget on Monday, December fifteenth, at a legislative sess- session at six PM. Um, so I look forward to hearing all of the comments from my colleagues as we really dig down into this. Uh, I asked it, questions begin to trickle in as soon as possible. I know that Thanksgiving is this Thursday. Uh, we're hoping to get most of the questions in by this Friday. But as you get questions, uh, just keep sending them in to Jared so that we can get them to our directors and the administration and get the answers back as soon as possible, so we can uh, begin our presentations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Is there any other new business?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Davis?
Sure, if this is new business, but I just wanted to um, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and also remind everyone and our residents out there to make sure that they have working smoke alarms. Winter is a time when there is an increase in fires, so just make sure you're, all your smoking, smoke alarms are working. And thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is six fifty-nine PM. I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.